We're going to call this meeting to order. Call the meeting of Hopkin Town Council of December 16th, 2013 to order with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, I need a motion to sit as a licensing board.
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have a Class B V liquor license. Open a hearing on an application for a Class B V beverage license filed by Daniel Canuck of 104 Finnerhill Road, Hope Valley, for property located at 14 Spring Street, Hope Valley. License to include the patio area identified as Sessos Platte, 27 Lot 99. We saw fees paid and notices posted.
Notice has been posted, these are pending.
Okay. All right. Mr. Canuck, you want to come to the podium, please? Want to just give a brief history of what you're doing to the old legends?
Well, basically, we're going to turn it back into a family-style restaurant, pizza and whatnot. The area outside is going to be, I've spoken to Ray Beta about, he wants another exit in the back area. Basically, I'm going to make, close the gates so nobody can walk around the area with any drinks, so they won't be leaving the patio area itself. Going to do some small renovations inside as far as seating. The bar area is going to be, you know, shrank down. I'm leaning more towards the family-style restaurant. My son's in culinary, Johnson &amp; Wales. My other daughter is not in culinary, but she's working at Apple Rehab in Westerly. I'm just trying to do something for their future. So basically, that's what we're trying to set up in there. I haven't, just got the keys to get into the building, so I'll be starting to do the minor renovations. I've already spoken to Brad about getting in and for him to do some inspections on the property.
David, you want to, have any questions?
I think it's a wonderful idea. I live in Hope Valley, I've lived in Hope Valley for 32 years, and I'd love to see something done with that and something done permanently with that, somebody, you know, year after year after year, keeping it going. And I think it's a nice spot, really is a nice spot.
Oh, I do believe so. I mean, I owned a Ranzio franchise previous to this, back in 95, and it was just, I'm also in the escrow section of building business, so it was a little bit too much, but with, you know, with my son, I'm going to have, he's going to be backing me, and my stepson's going to come involved.
Sure.
We're going to do Saturday and Sunday breakfast. Not leaning towards that. Closing at nights between 9:30, 10 o'clock, maybe 11 the latest.
Yeah.
Just, I don't want the crowd that was previous to that in there. I want, again, more family-style dining, but I want them to be able to have what they want.
No music?
Well, there'll be music playing, but there's...
No outside band or something like that?
No bands, no, not at all.
Okay. Yeah, I don't mind music, you know, as long as the neighbors, I'm worried about the neighbors, that's why I'm saying if there's a band there, then we've got a situation.
Right, I don't foresee and I don't want to go, I hate to use past 12 o'clock at night.
Oh, yeah.
I don't want to, you know, disturb the neighbors, I want to keep them on my side. I want, you know, basically to bring new food to the, I hate to say it, New York-style pizza, so.
I think that sounds marvelous.
Nice thin crust and Sicilian.
I think it sounds marvelous, it's like having a Main Street pizza where everybody can kind of get together and chat. And it does close between 9 and 10.
Right.
But it's just very popular, it's a very popular place for everybody, all the families to gather.
Exactly. Well, you know, I'm also leaning...
And especially with your son, having your son help, because it really is a wonderful way to give him some experience, too.
But I've also worked, excuse me, I've also worked with chef, I'm going to be talking to culinary students at the high school, and bringing them in and maybe to do a small program from this, because my son went to Charro for the culinary. And chef, I want to bring her on board, and this way, you know, the kids can get some experience in the real restaurant rather than what they're serving over there.
Are you in the water line right there?
There's a water line go up Spring Street half a...
No, it's a well, it's a well set up, and it will be quality-tested, and I'm also leaning towards putting in a water system.
I know it's a relatively small lot, you get the parking lot, you get the building yourself, that's about it. Please, let's move on back. But you've also got the river right there in the pond.
Exactly. I don't own the property in the back, I believe our EI owns the property. She leases it out for a dollar for, if I had a function on a Saturday or a Sunday.
Yeah, sure.
So I've already spoken through that.
Good. I think it's a wonderful idea.
So, again... I'm trying.
Good luck, good luck.
Thank you.
Well, I wish you luck. I was going to ask you, your race, your family, obviously, was it, did you always live on Finnerhill or with your family?
Well, no, I have an ex-wife, so we, she was on Tomacaw Valley, and I brought the kids up. I also coached in Charro for years in the flag football leagues and the midget leagues. I just, you know, I try to keep them to a local area flavor. He stayed local to the college at Johnson &amp; Wales, which is the only thing close for that, and again, my daughter is doing the CNA work in the area, she's also still attending Charro.
Well, it's wonderful. No, I wish you luck, and, you know, I've been a little concerned because it's been vacant for a while, so.
Yep. We're going to keep up with all the standards.
They had wonderful fish there, you know, a while back. Fish and chip night, mm.
Really? Okay.
Whatever.
Well, we're leaning towards, going to do some ethnic evenings, obviously Thursday night, corned beef and cabbage. We're looking into a Polish, Pologies and Galunkis, which my Ukrainian heritage comes in, so.
My wife's Ukrainian, oh, interesting.
So, we're going to try and keep the local flavor. I mean, I had several names when I first started, it was Dodge City. Wasn't going to go over well, so. Then I was going to call it the new damn diner, but, I mean, again, that wasn't going. But the Charro Grill is what we settled on after speaking with my daughter and son on that.
Nice. That's a nice one.
Appreciate that.
You all set, Sylvia?
Mm-hmm.
Scott, you have any?
No, I would say that I'm not an expert on the restaurant business, but I understand it's a very difficult business to be in, and it's important to, when a business leaves, to have another, replace it in the same location as possible. But I wish you the best.
Thank you.
I know we chit-chatted before the meeting, and it's good that that building won't be vacant, and look forward to you being an important part of the Hopkin community.
I appreciate that.
You're not buying the building, you're just leasing?
I will own the building.
Okay. Oh, I wasn't aware, I thought it was a lease.
Well, I have a leasing, well, in order to get the funding for the property and I have to have a running business, so I, my lawyer and I had to approach a lease agreement, and when everything meets codes and specifications and licenses are passed and completed, we're will be opening and it will be in my name.
Okay. But you're going to buy the property itself?
Yes.
Okay, as well as?
Everything, the whole thing.
Okay. Well, that's good. I guess you're going to plan on doing some renovations inside? I know it's just an open room in there.
Yes, it's an open room. I'm looking into wood fireplaces and stuff like that, because it already has the application, the piping out for that, but again, I'll be applying for permits and everything. Again, I said I'm a builder in the area, and Brad can attest to that. I also work with Lauren at Richmond, I've got a couple of houses going in the area, so.
That's easy, okay.
Trying to keep busy.
Yeah, good. Well, yeah, I just wish you luck. I know Wendy was there, not too long, maybe a year or two.
Yeah.
Maybe a couple of years Wendy was there, but, yeah, I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone out there wishing to be heard on this matter? Okay.
There's a lady.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please, come up to the podium.
I'm Deb House.
If you want to come up there, please introduce yourself, thanks.
Do you usually swear on your witnesses at the town meetings? Okay, thank you very much. I'm Deb House, living in 22 Spring Street, which is just a couple of properties away from this, and I'm certainly cheered to hear the changes that he's proposing here. In the past, we've had a great deal of trouble with noise there and speeding, and I haven't felt that there has been any particular support from the town in keeping a lid on that. Now, this doesn't sound like it will engender that sort of behavior, but if it does, can we expect the town to support the neighbors' quiet enjoyment of their own property?
You call us up, you call the town manager, he'll dispatch the police.
Call the police?
Yep.
Right, but, you know, that hasn't happened a lot in the past because it's instantaneous, people are gone, so it almost needs a presence there to make sure that it doesn't happen.
Yeah, but I think what the case is, we have licenses in the town of Hopkin Town, and when it comes up to renewal, we can question, you know, the license itself and how the person who owns that property or business, they would have to come before the council sitting as a licensing board to address that. We had one place in Hope Valley that in the past has had some issues, and the council actually had to deal with that. So the Hopkin Town Council has the obligation, responsibility, if they so choose to exercise it, to revoke licenses if it ever got really severe. But the public is protected in that sense, so if anybody has any legitimate concerns and is not rectified, the council does have action if they so choose to implement it to make sure that the license holder, any license holder in town complies with things which are good to the public health and safety of the community.
And so what would the process be if it was not a happy situation? Just call the cops and keep complaining?
Call the police.
Well, we have to call the police and make a formal complaint.
Okay.
Because we can't tell them to keep a policeman there. They can certainly check by.
Sure.
But it needs to be through the neighbors, really have to make a formal complaint.
Okay.
Well, and I think what the counselor Hurst was pointing out is, when we do these yearly licenses, it's important for you, if you have a complaint, to let us know. And that's where, as he pointed out, we have the ability to withhold, suspend, or have a discussion with the owner about any issues the neighbors have.
Are the licenses renewed yearly?
Yes.
Yes. And are the neighbors notified that that process is happening?
It's an ad in the newspaper. But every time this year, every, around this time, you can always call the town clerk. In December, we look at these licenses.
Actually, it's the first...
Oh, excuse me, it is earlier. That's right, yeah, it's earlier, yeah.
When? In beginning of November? Okay. All right.
We'll take care of, if you voice your concerns.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Excuse me, if any concerns, you can have my private cell, my cellphone number, call me at any time.
All right, great. Good seeing you.
Okay.
Motion to grant an approval of the Class B V license subject to all state and town regulations being met in all town taxes, current and fees current prior to issue.
Seconded.
Okay. Motion made second, any further discussion, folks? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, Victor Ling license, open a hearing on an application for a Class A Victor Ling license, Charro Grill, 14 Spring Street, Hope Valley, Daniel Canuck, applicant.
Yeah, can I just make a motion to grant approval to the license subject to all state and town regulations being met, all town taxes current prior to issue, and all fees current prior to issue.
Yes.
Okay. Motion made in second?
Seconded.
Okay. Motion made in second, any further discussion, folks? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, Mr. Canuck. Okay, next on the agenda is holiday sales licenses renew, renewal, opening a hearing on the following holiday sales licenses. Brick Oven Restaurant, 209 Main Street, Ashaway, Charro Grill, 14 Spring Street, Hope Valley, Daniel Canuck. Need a motion to grant?
Motion to grant the renewal, or the renewal and then the approval to do licenses for the Brick Oven Restaurant and the Charro Grill, subject to all state and town regulations being met, and all town taxes current prior to issue, and fees current prior to issue.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn as licensing board reconvenes council.
Seconded.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is a zoning ordinance amendment, zoning ordinance text amendment hearing. Opening hearing on petitions filed by Megawatt Energy Solutions LLC for property owned by Bank Street Holdings LLC located at 45 Bank Street, Hope Valley, Rhode Island, identified as a Sessos Platte, 28 Lot 122, and RFR 80 Rural Farming Residential Zone for a zoning ordinance text amendment to change the zoning district from RFR 80 to commercial on the zoning map and an amendment to the Hopkin comprehensive community plan, future land use map, changing the designation of said Sessos Platte 28 Lot 22, 122, from RFR 80 to commercial to enable the construction of a solar energy system. Our solicitor, Pat Buckley, wants to frame up this hearing. Pat, please.
Before Mr. Nakarado starts his presentation, the council will be familiar with some of what's going on here tonight, because you just had to do something similar with the 1111 Main Street property. In other words, this is a multi-step process. Your district use table doesn't allow the type of solar energy system that is being proposed for this area. So first issue is going to be whether or not you want to add that to the district use table. So you've got that issue to confront in the first instance, do you want to add solar energy to the district use table? If you do, then the next issue for you, do you have conditions that you want to put on that addition to the district use table? So you've got those to confront first. Once you get by that, you've got, do you want to grant a zone change to this area from RFR 80 to commercial? Because what's being proposed is that the solar energy system be allowed in a commercial zone, not in a residential zone. So then you have to confront the issue, do you want to change this from residential to commercial to allow this to occur in that spot, and the conditions you want to put on that. And then the very last thing, and this is a little bit different because you didn't have this with the 1111 Main Street, is bringing the comprehensive plan into conformance with whatever decision you make. But that, that's not actually that big a decision, because it kind of naturally follows from your decisions on the other two. So this is one of those multi-step things, you're going to want to keep that in mind as you're thinking about it and as you're listening to the testimony. Do you want to add this to the district use table? If you do, under what conditions? And do you want to change the zone to allow it to happen here? Okay?
Okay, thanks, Pat. Mr. Nakarado?
Yes. Evening. For the record, Attorney Vincent Nakarado, representing the applicants. As your solicitor has so aptly stated, there are three ordinances in front of you this evening. I won't repeat everything that she said, but sometimes it's tough for lawyers not to say things. You've got a text change, adding solar as a permitted use in town. We have a change to this map, which is the future land use map of your comprehensive plan, and then there's an ordinance rezoning the property in question from RFR 80 to commercial. Just by way of overview, this is property that is located at Lot 122 of Sessos Platte 28. It's approximately an eight-acre parcel that is directly adjacent to the Carriage Barn mini-storage facility on Main Street in Hope Valley. This property has an address of 45 Bank Street, which is, the property actually is on two streets. I think it belonged with the application that I filed or some site map. The property is located right, right in this section of the Bank Street and Main Street. It's zone, as I said, zone RFR 80, has been since the town has adopted zoning in the 70s. However, as you'll hear from the testimony, the property actually has never been used in a residential fashion.
Mr. Nakarado, could you get some of the microphones, please? That'd be great, thanks.
Just for the record, so if it picked up what I said, the property actually, although zone residential, since the inception of zoning, it actually has never been used residentially. It is an excavated gravel pit, and I have some number of photos that I'll introduce as the testimony goes along, showing that the excavations performed somewhat of a hollow that will somewhat shield this use from probably passerbys of Bank Street and on Main Street. The, your use table does not permit solar, because solar is something new that was not contemplated probably when your ordinance was drafted. So what we're doing is seeking to add solar as a permitted use with a criteria spelled out in the ordinance that's been proposed. We had a hearing before the planning board, which under your ordinance is required to make recommendations to you on any type of zone changes. I believe that's made part of the record. You'll see that the planning board decision was unanimous in favor of all three ordinances. And rather than listening to me as anything further on overview, what I'm going to do, I have four witnesses this evening, Mr. Lombardo, Joseph Lombardo, who is a planner in the state of Rhode Island, Michael Lenahan, a registered real estate appraiser, the owner, one of the owners of the property, Kevin McDonald, for very short testimony, and testimony from our solar consultant, Kurt Maitland, from Soltaas Energy Systems. So what I'd like to do is first call Mr. Lombardo and go through his testimony.
Mr. Lombardo, we're going to sway in.
Could you raise your hand, please? You follow this way with the testimony, you're not scared of the people, so we can help you out. Yes, I will. Thank you.
Turn on the microphone, I can use some... For the record, Mr. Lombardo, your name and address?
Name for the record is Joseph Lombardo, spelled L-O-M-B-A-R-D-O. I reside at 11 Grand Sarah Drive in Hope Valley, Rhode Island.
And what is your profession, sir?
I'm a land use planning consultant, certification with the American Institute of Certified Planners.
And Mr. Lombardo, you have served as a planner in southern Rhode Island municipalities?
Several communities, including Hopkin Town, Richmond, and Westerly.
And what period of time were you planner in the town of Hopkin Town?
It was in the early to mid 90s, 92 through 98, that time span.
You're familiar with the Hopkin comprehensive community plan?
Yes, I am. I was one of the facilitators on the original plan in the early 90s.
Are you familiar with the future land use map, which is hanging on the easel there in the community plan?
Yes, I am.
You familiar with the property in question?
Very familiar with that property, as most of the councils know, I live right around the corner from there, I go by it many times a day.
You testified before the planning board on the hearing on the recommendations for this particular proposal?
Yes, I did.
And in preparation for this hearing, Mr. Lombardo, you prepare a memorandum?
I did.
You have that with you?
I have a copy here, and I believe you have some extras that we can hand out to the council this evening.
This a copy of your memorandum?
Yes, it is.
Have one admitted for the record, and then there's some extras if you can follow Mr. And this memorandum was prepared in connection with the request to change the future land use map of the comprehensive plan?
Yes, along with the zoning changes that are proposed as well.
And would you go through your memorandum, Mr. Lombardo, on the items of the plan that you have emphasized, and then your opinion on the request for the amendment?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. Nakarado. Members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. We were asked to take a look at this proposal. We took a look at the proposed map changes, the text changes, you know, it has multi-facets to this proposal in order to achieve what they're looking to do. Again, Mr. Nakarado highlighted the location, you know, 45 Bank Street is the address assigned to Platte 28 Lot 122, it's just under eight acres of land, and is in fact zone residential. And as pointed out, it has actually, certainly since the time I've, you know, lived in Hope Valley in 1981, it has never been used as residential from my own personal experience. Now, we tried to put the site in context a little bit, and we take a look at areas from both driving it visually, walking the areas, and also using aerial photography. But obviously, you know, as you well know, Hope Valley is a village area. It consists of single-family homes, multifamily homes, some neighborhood business, and a little bit of small-scale commercial uses. This property is currently vacant at this present time. Now, the first considerations are from a zoning perspective. In order to allow this, we have to actually make changes to the zoning ordinance, and that involves the use table, the zoning map, and because we're changing the zoning map, we also have to change the future land use map, as has been stated. So we have a new use table number, 486, and I think if you've read the planning board's recommendation to you, it has a slightly different text name to it, Solar Energy Systems, but it has photovoltaic in there, and we'll explain to you why that's there in a few minutes. And then it had four specific requirements in order to have one of these facilities on a site in a commercial zone, and there's been a couple of text changes to that, again, is reflected in the planning board memorandum to you, which has to do with the height of the fixtures and that type of thing. But you'll hear that from the applicant. So the key here is that there's no other major building or facility being proposed with this project. It's the energy collection panels and some small electrical features, again, that'll be described to you. But in essence, the site is being transformed into a collector of solar energy, and that's really the entire scope of the project. Now, I mentioned in here about the fact that the aqua overlay zone, that these would be permitted uses in that, and that's an important consideration, because the type of solar energy system being proposed is photovoltaic. It's not one that has a hot water system where you're collecting and turning it into steam or any other moving pots to it. So there's no particular hazards being created on this site, and again, the applicant will describe that to you. So that's the reason why these uses would be permitted in the aqua overlay, because we felt that they're acceptable in the zones. So in addition to looking at the future land use map on page three, we've also looked at, you know, some of the goals and policies as it reflects to this type of use. But we can see that the future land use map is your guide for your community, and it talks about, interestingly, the village areas, a small-scale, low-impact, light industrial uses can be allowed in the mixed-use areas such as Hope Valley. Larger-scale projects, you would anticipate seeing at exit one and exit two. But the plan even suggests some guidance for the council at the bottom of page three. Consideration would be paid to environmental constraints, proximity to circulation corridors, utilities, or the infrastructure. This site is ideally suited for what they're looking to do, because they'll be able to tap right into the grid, the road networks are in place for service if needed, and there's very little environmental constraints to this type of use on this property. It's not conducive to all commercial uses, clearly. Land use goal three talks about having density and development occur based on environmental constraint and land uses that are consistent with the land use map. And again, there is some small-scale commercial here and some neighborhood business in Hope Valley. Now, we also want to focus on economic development, because in essence, this is an economic development project. Goal number one talks about expanding the town's tax base by encouraging light in industrial and also office commercial businesses. It also talks about having the key ingredients to enhance the business climate in town for an employment opportunity. Now, in this case, this won't be in a long-term employer, but there'll be some short-term economic development activities in the area while these are installed. I do mention on page five, the purposes of zoning, and again, you should be looking at those as you make your land use decision this evening. Does it meet these purposes of zoning? I feel that it meets these, that's why I listed them, these aren't all of your purposes, these are the ones I feel it does meet. It talks about the goals and patterns of the comprehensive plan, the characteristics of the site, is it suitable for the land use being proposed? You have to always look at that. Is the quality of the design, is it a high-quality design for this site? Are they putting together a good plan for you? I don't know how clear the aerial photograph is in the report, but you can certainly see in there that while this is zone residential, it's really surrounded by some light industries, some business. You have the state highway garage, you have the mini warehouses, you have some businesses along Main Street, you have, not too far away, the ambulance building, you have Woodmansey Gas. So there's definitely a mixed use here in this part of Hope Valley, with the ball field across the street. ball field across the street. So, it's not purely a residential area, but it is. Lastly, on page seven, I tried to summarize the key points, and I think this will help you this evening. It's my opinion that it is clearly consistent with the economic development strategies of the town. You know, I've lived here since 1981, and when I see, you know, opportunities for economic development, that's helping the town's tax base. It's helping keep our tax rate stable. It's my opinion that this map amendment will not alter the general mixed-use character of this village of Hope Valley, particularly in the vicinity of the project site. As will be testified, this has historically been a non-conforming use site. It's never been used for residential. And by doing this action this evening, what you are doing is you're giving yourself some certainty. You will know the exact use that is going on there. Even though it's being zoned commercial, it's for this use. So, you will now have a conforming use, and you'll know exactly what it is. So, I think that's a good thing. It will meet and exceed the town zoning requirements for the property. We're setting up some rules and regulations for this type of use. Those are the four conditions. So, we can look at the conformance and make sure when they, if you adopt this, and they go back to the Planning Board next month, they have to abide by the rules and the regulations and the requirements. So, we're putting those parameters and those guidelines around it. And lastly, as I said, there are land use goals and policies and economic development goals and policies. There are purpose statements in zoning that all say that this is a consistent, this change would be consistent with your comprehensive plan and your zoning ordinance. And I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you have now. I'll obviously be here through the presentation. If you have other questions, as it comes up, just feel free to ask.
Yes, Scott?
I got two questions. Number one, would you address, in my reading, this piece of property has a history of non-conforming use. Would you address that? Because it would seem, from my reasoning, that if you put, I know it's RF80, RF80, that it would actually pin down a specific use for the property if we changed the zoning. That's one question. The other thing is, I spent some time in the planner's office today, and I learned the town of Middletown, Rhode Island, has, looking at the proposed tables, for example, there's things that are permitted. Yet another town, which certainly is developed with more development issues than Hopkin, it has Middletown, Rhode Island, they have special use permits for certain types of things. And would you address those two issues?
So, the first issue is, is the non-conforming use? I wasn't exactly sure what you're asking, Scott.
I'm asking basically about the history of that area being used for different purposes.
Right, exactly. The fact that it's zoned residential, if there's been a use that had existed prior to zoning coming in, that means it was a legal non-conforming use, and it can continue that way. Some of the site history that I've seen here had to do with excavations. It had to do with storing vehicles on it. All of the uses that I've seen, some of the histories summarized, and I think Mr. Nakarato has that information, none of them have been residential. So, you know, that really, that really has been the case then. As I said, from my own personal history over 30 years, I've never seen residential use on the site. So, if anything else had been on there and it had been continued, it would have been a legal non-conforming use. So, you know, once that goes away, then the only thing that can go there is residential.
How about the, and the use table that I?
Right. The use table is a good discussion, and we had that discussion with the Planning Board a few nights ago. And that's one of the reasons for specifying the type of solar energy, the photovoltaic versus all solar energy, because they're not all the same. So, as you're looking at those uses, and if you can break solar energy down into different types of solar energy uses, there are potentially instances where you might want the special use permit and ones where you feel you don't need it. So, the question for you this evening is, if you're comfortable with the use as being described to you, being located in a commercial zone in town, or a manufacturing zone in town, without having to go to the zoning board, but going in front of the Planning Board for development plan review, which again is fairly extensive anyway, you're doing, you're looking at a variety of factors in front of the Planning Board. You're not questioning the use. You're saying, bring us a good development plan, follow the rules, get your permits, and we'll let you have this type of facility on a commercially zoned site. So, the discussion is, why do some towns have special use permits and some don't? It's really a decision based, the council makes, when it's establishing the use table or adding to it. Do you feel comfortable with a particular use being allowed anywhere in the commercial zones in town? And, you know, there aren't that many of them, but there are several of them. If you're comfortable with that, this type of solar energy use, photovoltaic, being in any of those locations, then you can put the P for permitted. If you felt that one that would be utilizing chemicals, water and glycol mix, or an antifreeze mix, you know, in a pumped situation through solar panels, well, clearly, I think you'd want that extra review from the planning, from the zoning board on top of the Planning Board, to make sure that they meet all the criteria of zoning. So, I hope that answers your question, Scott, but that is how you have to look at every one of these uses when you go down the table, or if you're going to add one to it. Any other council, anyone else have a question about that?
Yes, I do.
The only thing I'd like to say is, if possible tonight, I'd like to have some comments from members of the Planning Board, so I can get their feel in person.
Well, we have their recommendation here.
But I mean, also, any comments they have to make.
Well, if they feel that they should chime in, they can certainly do that. Sylvia?
No, I think that the Planning Board did a very detailed analysis, and I appreciate it. And I think the information we've gotten to date has been very useful.
Okay.
And comprehensive.
As I said, the applicant will be able to describe the system in more detail than I do, and you'll understand that.
My concern is, every time I have seen the 486, the new use number, it is solar energy system. It is not, and I think it should be specifically photovoltaic.
Right.
Solar energy. Every time I have seen it in your writing in Mr. Lamphier's, it's solar energy system, which is not the correct terminology.
Right.
Needs to say, which the Planning Board was very specific about, the photovoltaic energy system, or photovoltaic solar system. I think that needs to be changed across the board.
I think Mr. Nakarato was going to.
And it's very concerning to me that it doesn't say that.
I think he was going to suggest that as an amendment to the actual application. We can't, we can say it, but you have to actually ask the council to make the physical change to the ordinance.
Right, because I don't want to approve a use 486 of solar energy system.
Correct. Right, and they're not asking.
I'll approve it as photovoltaic, but I won't do it as solar energy, because I think it is much too broad.
Right.
Especially for the aquifer protection overlays and the other things that we would like to do as an overlay. I don't think the photovoltaic has a problem with that, but certainly the rest of it does.
Correct.
So, I'm very concerned about that. And I know you have another concern.
Please, thanks, ma'am.
I'll hand it.
George, I just want to tell you, on the surface, I think it's a wonderful idea. I also want to say on the record that I'm actually opposed to mixed-use development in this town. I don't want to, I don't want to see a house and businesses on both sides of it, because it ruins the value of that residence. But, you know, I don't think this is one of those cases. Couple of questions. Why this area, why not one of our commercial areas? Why didn't they define five acres of one of our commercial areas and set up the operation there? I mean, the commercial areas are on roads. I mean, I wouldn't think they could lock in the power grid, lock into the power grid that way.
I probably couldn't answer that question.
Okay.
I think next witness hopefully will address that.
You know, just for the record, in the memo that we've received here, it says, to prevent unauthorized access, the facility shall be enclosed by a perimeter fence no more than six feet high. I believe it should be no less than six feet high.
And that's in two locations at least.
So, just have that corrected, please, if we've.
And it was not.
Let him finish, ma'am.
I know, and it wasn't in the Planning Board amendment.
Let him finish.
George, are there any chemicals involved in these photovoltaic panels that could leak, that could pollute the groundwater?
I'm not aware that there is any. And again, the applicant will describe them in exact detail. As far as I know, they're metal, glass, and that's it.
No mercury involved, there's no heavy metals?
No, but I'll let him describe it to you in exact detail.
Is this, is this area within a flood plain? Because you've got the river. You're abutting the river.
I don't know the answer.
Part of it is. I think the easterly section is.
Because when we had the great flood, much of years ago, this area, a good portion of it flooded.
It floods, yeah. Yeah, part of it. I think that was one of the reasons why the housing proposal failed a few years ago.
Right.
Well, these are going to be up on, like stilts, I guess, for lack of a better.
Supports or some sort.
Support. So, you know, they could probably establish that flood line and make sure that the bottom of the panels are at least.
Yeah, I wouldn't think they'd want to. They'd be aware of something like that.
Right.
Because it could be a real problem. Do these panels create no pollution? And when I say pollution, I mean a sense of pollution. No noise pollution, no, they're not going to be visible from the street, I hope.
There's no noise. They don't move. There are some panels that have motorized, and they follow the sun throughout the course of the day. These do not. They're fixed. There's no glare from them. As far as visibility, I can't tell you exactly how much visibility will be from every single angle, from Main Street or Bank Street.
Yeah.
That is, it does sit down.
Below Bank Street.
There might, at certain times of the year, there might be some glimpse of it, but because there won't be any glare, these are dark. So, you may not see them unless you're really looking for them.
The reason why I ask that is because you've got neighbors all along that Main Street, right there.
Right.
And if you've got noise of any sort, if you've got glare from any sort, you know, they have a perfect way to come in here and look at us cross-eyed.
As far as I know, there's neither of those.
Okay. I think I'm all set, George, with that. Yeah. At this point right now, I'd like to have those questions answered, though.
He would definitely answer those for you.
When the time comes. Sure, thanks.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Before I call Mr. Maitland, let me say for the record that the applicant is amenable to accepting a limitation on the use of this property as to strictly solar. We're not trying to rezone it and use it for anything else. This is, so I believe you have jurisdiction that you can set limitations on it, and we're amenable to accepting a limitation, that this rezone would be subject to a limitation, that the use be strictly a solar energy system, and with the words added by the Planning Board.
Will there be a structure on this property?
Only the panels.
Okay.
Only the panels. Mr. Maitland will describe that in detail, so you know what the end use is here.
Lisa, you want to square her, please?
Do you want to sound this way, the testimony you're about to give, the testable?
I do.
For the record, your name and address, please?
Kurt Mayland, 105 Temera Circle, Avon, Connecticut.
And what is your profession?
I'm a lawyer.
And are you a consultant to the solar industry?
Yes, I am.
And you're a consultant to Megawatt?
Yes, I am.
And you're also a consultant to another agency, another firm, SolTAS?
Yes, I am.
That was involved in this property earlier?
Yes, I am.
And how long you've been involved in this industry?
Hey, guys.
I've been involved in the solar industry about six or seven years. I've been an environmental lawyer since early 2000.
Are you familiar with the application before this board?
Yes, I am.
You testified before the Planning Board?
Yes, I did.
A couple of weeks ago on this matter?
Yes, I did.
Let me show you a, and I believe the best terminology of that's a sketch of an array?
Yes, it is.
And is that something that was prepared by Megawatt in connection with this hearing?
It was, I believe, first prepared by SolTAS and then edited by Megawatt.
Okay. You're familiar with that?
Yes, I am.
Let me move this as an exhibit. I believe this is part of the application, but just let me make it part of the record. Each have that as well. All right, let me show you this map. Identify that.
It's the proposed property, pretty much the solar.
It's a survey of the property in question.
Correct.
As well. I believe everybody, that's part of the application as well.
Mayland, M-A-Y-L-A-N-D.
And if I may, Kurt, show you this.
Yes.
And what is that?
It's a photo of a typical ground mount solar array, one of many different varieties that we could put on this site.
We'll move this as part of the record as well. I don't believe you have that, so I have some extras.
You do that? No, I don't think you do.
No, I'm just looking.
First of all, Kurt, referring you to the sketch showing the array, it appears that the, what are the, what's demarked in that? I guess it's sort of like an orange, is it?
Right.
What does that represent?
Well, these are the rows of the panels. Typically, on a solar array, I mean, on every solar array, the panels are aligned east to west, tilted facing south to take advantage of maximum sunlight. And that's what the orange really represents, and the white space in between will be open space, natural ground cover, probably reseeded with grass.
I notice you're staying away. The easterly end of this property, the easterly boundary of this site is actually the Wood River. Is that correct?
Correct.
And the Wood River has setback requirements. Is that correct?
Yes, it does.
It has a 200-foot riverbank setback?
Yes, it does.
And are you proposing any type of activity in that setback area?
No, we are not. The, I mean, what we're usually governed by is avoiding shade in all instances, which is why you see such a great space in between the rows. The actual rows themselves of panels can shade the ones behind it. So, you generally have a pretty significant setback row to row. And with respect to the river itself, you know, we are not even allowed to cut trees in the setback area. So, not only did we have to push the panels back out of the setback, but we had to further push them, because there's some fairly tall trees there that we had to stay away from to avoid eastern shading.
So, not only are you staying away from the setback area required by DEM, you're further staying away from any construction within that, any type of environmental area that would prevent any type of intrusion into either the wetlands. There's some freshwater wetlands on site also. Is that true?
Correct. And we're staying away from all of the wetlands. In any environmental constraint, we don't anticipate being anywhere close to those, any of the resource areas.
Your proposal, or at least this is labeled as a concept plan, shows the panels in a 100-foot, intruding into a 100-foot setback from the, would be the Westerly boundary of a property. Is that correct?
Correct.
Now, have you made changes on your proposal, at least on as far as your concept plan is concerned?
We have. Originally, with the storage units there, we incorrectly thought we could get a little closer, but it turned out we had to push the panels back to obey that setback. And a few other changes have happened since this concept plan. One of them, we actually shrank the size of the array for various reasons. So, what we have now in front of National Grid and what we would be proposing is essentially a, you see here, it says 616 KW. We would be proposing a 450 KW AC array. It significantly lowered, among other things, it significantly lowered our costs with National Grid. When we interconnect with the lines along Bank Street, we have to pay National Grid to make certain upgrades. And by shrinking it a little bit, we significantly lowered our costs. And also, we're allowed to, you know, could push out of that setback area by not having it so big.
So, you would not be requiring any type of dimensional variance with the?
We would not.
You would not. Show you this, Kurt, yeah. Just could you identify that?
Sure. It's just a schematic, a very general schematic. Sure, it's just a schematic, a very general schematic of how a PV array works.
I could just have this introduced as part of the record. Could you, could you describe how this solar, solar energy system would work?
Sure, then I'll, I guess I'll continue, continue to refer to this concept plan. As indicated, generally, in all cases, the arrays are formed with a series of panels in an east to west direction facing south. On this particular plan, there'll be about 25 degrees at a tilt facing south. The panels themselves are dark, a dark blue or a black to, to collect sight, not to reflect it, to correct, excuse me, to collect sunlight, not to reflect it. To answer your question about the glare while I'm going through this, even the, the metal surrounding the, the shatterproof glass is coated so that that doesn't glare either. These arrays, it's a fairly simple function, they collect sunlight and take the energy and they're connected underneath by wires underneath, it's often called a plug-and-play system, and these panels are placed on a racking system, which has yet to be determined, and we will have that information for the planning board hearing, but generally they can be, you know, at the low end of the panel, we'd like it to be high enough so that it's easy to maintain from a lawn mowing standpoint, so that we don't, so that a great deal of snow doesn't collect and actually rise above the panel, and at the upper end, we've built sites that, they're no higher than me at the upper end. We've asked for a 12-foot maximum in case that, as in your picture there, they, we have the ability to stack a few on top of each other, so that we might be going a little bit higher than the, than the five foot I mentioned earlier. So these panels collect energy, the energy runs through the wires underneath the panels and go out to essentially a combiner box, a box that organizes the wire at the end of each row, and at the end of each row, we generally, and it depends on ground conditions, we would bury all the wiring in, in, in plastic conduit, at the top of the conduit being at least three feet below the ground. All of this wiring would go out to, and I see in this diagram, if you see in the lower, in the southern corner, you have a little box there that says inverter. It's a concept plan, it's not a construction drawing. The inverter would, would probably, would most likely be up towards Bank Street in the northwest corner, and what this inverter does is it takes our energy, which is DC energy, and it converts it to AC energy, the things that come out of the plugs and that we can use. Sitting right next to the inverter is a, is a device called a transformer, and that transformer basically takes our electricity and, and matches it to the voltage along Bank Street, and off of that transformer, we would, we would most likely come underground and then up to essentially a riser pole, that's about 25 feet off the ground. We're getting into the, the area where, we're starting to get into National Grid territory, and out of that riser pole, we'd go up to another telephone pole, which would house, the first one would probably have our meter on it, which measures the amount of electricity we're producing, so National Grid essentially knows how much we're producing and how much to pay us, and then there'd be another pole, another pole or two with disconnect switches or closers. Essentially what they do is isolate our site, in case there's a problem on the site, it doesn't affect the grid, and in case the grid has a problem, it doesn't come back onto our site, they can remotely shut us off. And throughout the array, on the combiner boxes and the inverter boxes, there are also manual disconnect switches that can actually shut down power on certain rows, both on the AC and the DC side. A couple other notes to make about the facility in anticipation of some questions. The, um, the inverters and transformers do hum a little bit during the day, they're obviously shut down at night, but given the location and the distance from Bank Street and the storage unit along the west, it will have, it'll basically be noiseless for the most part. None of the homes along Main Street will hear anything during the day or the night. We have security lighting, but it's, it's by switch only, it's at the gates and at the inverter houses, so they're in, you know, we'd have a knock box and the emergency personnel in town would have access to it, and our representatives would have access, but it would be low-to-the-ground lighting for access at night for emergency purposes only, it would be dark at night. We have, typically we'd put, you know, we, we, we would put a six-foot chain link up just for security. There is some flexibility there. We have, on other arrays, put, we were in a, had a joint use with a farm up in Athol, Massachusetts, and they, they indicated they wanted to have an ag fence, so we had like the wooden posts with that black mesh that, that suited more of an ag environment, but it's something that could be discussed with neighbors or with the planning board when the time came about the type of fencing. As indicated earlier, there's, there's, there's space in between the rows to drive a small pickup because of the shading issues, we want to keep them far apart from each other, and around the perimeter, you can see there is an access road for emergency personnel, so they can get in there and drive vehicles around it. The, to answer your question about hazardous, hazardous materials or chemicals, the only issue that has really ever come up is in the, inside the transformers, just like the buckets you see on the telephone poles, there is oil. We, we use Cooper transformers with a biodegradable oil. We will give those, provide the specs for all of that at the, at the planning board hearing if, if that were to happen, and there are ways to, they rarely leak, I mean, it's, it's virtually impossible, but if, we do have retainment systems, or we can put up a retainment berm on the, on the cement pad to, to prevent it from leaking out in case that were the situation, but it is, it is a biodegradable oil. And that's essentially it, as I said, we, we, this was, I'll go back and answer another one of your questions, because I think it was relevant. We, the project is part of a program, a state program that National Grid implements. We refer to it as a standard contract program, it was a four-year program in Rhode Island, it's coming to an end in 2014. It was a, a very aggressive bid process for these particular projects, and back at SolTAS, they won six projects out of 75 applicants, and one of the, and, one of the reasons we picked this particular site was we tried to target gravel pits and sand pits and landfills in places where we think it's most appropriate, mostly from, in my opinion, from an environmental perspective, where there's not a lot of value environmentally because of the digging that's gone on in the past. The, the other main factor we look at is the distribution lines have to be essentially perfect for our proposed use. National Grid is a little bit concerned because they, they can't really control us like they can other facilities, hydro or coal, they can't tell us to not produce as much or to produce more. We produce what we produce, and they have to kind of adapt to us, so they, they only allow us to be on certain distribution lines and only a certain amount on each distribution line, and Bank Street ended up being a, ended up being a perfect line for that. Otherwise, it can be extremely expensive and cost prohibitive, or they simply won't allow it. So the site from that perspective worked well, and frankly, and I do this, along with being a consultant, I, I deal with landowners a lot in developing new projects, mostly in Massachusetts, and finding a, frankly, a willing landowner who's willing to, to do something like this on his property and to work our way through the process is a key factor. And the fourth that we tend to look at very aggressively is, is just the general characteristics. I won't, I won't go into a, a big neighborhood and try to stick it right in the middle. We try to find a spot where we can screen it, I mean, we would have a lot of difficulty coming in and having 30 neighbors screaming at us, and we don't want to invite that kind of attention, so we try to find spots that we don't think there'll be a lot of opposition from neighbors. Even though we can, you know, we can screen them and they're noiseless and they don't, as you, they don't emit smoke, they don't use water, we don't put anything into the ground as far as any hazardous waste or anything else, really, they're fairly innocuous use of the land, and, you know, once they're done, they look like a construction site when they're being built, but once they're done, you know, you're looking at basically panels with free-flowing grass underneath, and we don't, you know, we're talking about grass, we're going to let grow, mow it two or three times a year, it's not going to look like a golf course, it kind of, it, it looks nice, it looks like a meadow underneath these panels, and it's, can be quite attractive in the end.
Kurt, you need any septic for this use?
We don't need any, any septic.
Need any water?
No water.
Just electricity?
Just the electricity.
Now, the noise that you say that emanates from the, is it from the transfer, or the inverter?
Both of them emanate, you know, right around 60 to 70 dB.
I, I've heard it compared to the noise that your, a personal computer makes when it's turned on.
Yeah, maybe it's slightly louder closer to a, a small vacuum cleaner, but when you, you know, noise dissipates quite quickly as you, as you move away from it, and given the distance we are from any homes with respect to these pieces of equipment, it's, it's impossible that the neighbors would ever hear anything even during the day.
How about maintenance of the facility and maintenance of the panels themselves?
Right, so, once we're up and running, you know, one of the criticisms of solar is, you know, we do create jobs during the construction process, quite, quite a lot, there'll be some excavation teams and electrical installation teams, all Rhode Island-based, and once we're up there, we don't create a lot of jobs, because they just sit there for 20, 25 years and don't require a lot of maintenance, which is a great thing for us, I mean, our electrical source is free and they don't require a lot of maintenance, they don't create a lot of jobs, but there's going to be almost no traffic to the site. I mean, we have, I said, two or three times a year, we'll have lawn mowing come in, certain circumstances where the rain and snow didn't clean the panels, we might have a team come in and clean them from pollen or dust or what might be there, but it'll all be nontoxic, mostly water and rags, very simple things to, to keep the panels clean. Every now and again, the inverters, everything's monitored remotely these days by the web, so we get, you know, an email saying the inverter isn't producing, the AC production is low, and we might send somebody from, our, the inverter manufacturer here would be Selectio, which is based in Lawrence, Mass., they would send a tech down, you know, one guy to come, come take a look at it, so, you know, there'd be no impact to the roads or, or the neighbors, once we're up and running at all, from any type of maintenance activity, really.
How often would, would Megawatt visit the property?
We would, I mean, most likely, we would appoint, you know, and ideally, we'd have to talk to Kevin or someone who would visit the site for security reasons, almost on a daily basis, or at least take a look at it, to make sure, and as, as indicated, we'd send the technical reps and the electricians to do maintenance. We do a yearly O and M on it, just to make sure everything's running properly, I mean, tighten the bolts and, and do all the regular maintenance, but as far as a, a Megawatt employee having to be there, it's, it would virtually never have to happen unless it was an emergency.
You produce any type of emissions, any, any gases or smoke or anything?
Not at all.
Like that emanate from this particular use?
Not at all.
Any waste products at all?
No waste products.
Assuming the worst, assuming that someone broke into the, into the array and, and damaged one of the panels, what, what would result from that? Any, any hazardous material that are in, in these panels that would leak out into the ground?
No, there's no hazardous materials inside the panels themselves, they are like the windshield of your car, fairly shatterproof, I mean, you'd have to do, you'd have to try really hard to smash one of those panels, I mean, every now and again, it happens during delivery, when we have thousands of panels, one comes cracked, but the glass just, it cracks, it doesn't fall on the ground, and any of the wiring, I mean, you would, you would have to be willing to dig, you know, three or four feet down with a, with a sawzall to get into that conduit and, and access any of the, any of the dangerous wiring after you jump the six-foot fence, so I don't think there's any danger at all that this presents.
And how, you, you say that these, these panels would be mounted on racks?
Right.
And how would, how would the racks attach to the ground?
Ideally, and, and this is, you know, something we're working on at the moment, you could either, there's a bunch of ways you do it, they can either be on soft sandy soil like this might be, in an ideal situation, you could, you can literally just push them into the ground with a hydraulic press, or there's some that you can screw into the ground. Another, another method that's becoming more and more popular is becomes more cost-effective and might work here, depending on the effectiveness of the grading, would be to place them on, it's called a ballasted system, essentially, if you think of like a, a metal tray on the ground with a post coming out of it with just cement blocks holding it to the ground, you wouldn't see the cement blocks just because they would be underneath the panels, but it's another, it's typically used in landfills and brownfields and areas where you can't, you're not allowed to penetrate the ground, you have, you have to rest on top, and we need, we're doing, in the process of doing some, some, some testing to make sure, the, where the groundwater table is on this site, to make sure that the, the stability of any post we drive in wouldn't be affected by that.
Do you need any, any state permits in connection with your proposal?
We do. We would need, and I don't know if I'd call it a permit, but we need to, we need to, and when we have, this is in the process, we'd have to work with DEM to make sure they're satisfied of the location of the wetlands and where we are, that we would not actually need a, a DEM permit, and then, in Rhode Island, they, the panels themselves, unlike some other states, they're considered impervious, if you will, so that they're, the state assumes there will be associated stormwater runoff, even though the reality is, there's so much space and so much grass in between the rows, we don't anticipate any runoff occurring, any increased runoff occurring, but we will need to get a, I believe it's called a ripides permit, in, you know, submit a stormwater plan to make sure that nothing comes off the site or around the site that, that wasn't there in its current condition.
So you wouldn't be shedding water on any adjacent neighboring properties, would you?
No, we would not, and the state would make sure of that, and I said, and it's, different states treat it differently, but in Massachusetts, they consider it impervious use. We, we only have to do stormwater permitting if, you know, we change the, the ground from like a forest to a field, not necessarily because of the panels, but here, it's mostly, it's mostly blank, there will be some grading in the northern corner, but nowhere, nowhere down near South Main Street, or on Main Street, excuse me.
Your business is strictly solar, you're not looking to do anything else on this site?
No.
Other than what you've just described?
Strictly solar, and, you know, given the size that we're looking at, out of the eight acres, it's, it's a 450 KW AC site, the actual footprint of the panels would be about two and a half acres, probably.
And how, how large is an individual panel, dimensionally?
Roughly, a 300-watt panel is a little over six feet by three feet.
And how many panels would you propose on this particular use?
It's roughly, and it's a little less than this, about three panels per kilowatt, so it's going to be a little over a 500 DC project, so it'd be, it'd be slightly north of 1,500 panels.
And they're stacked on rows, pretty much as, as depicted in that, in that photo?
Right, and that's, you know, that's sort of an engineering call, but they can go anywhere from, you know, we call it like your, your printer, we can, we have a site where you can, we have one panel portrait sitting on a post, so it's no taller than me, sometimes you can stack two panels portraits, sometimes, in that photo, I think you have four landscape stacked on top of each other, but for the most part, it's the same footprint, the same, the same spacing, the same shading worries, it's just a matter of how we want to mount them and how high we need them to be off the ground.
And this would all be shown and depicted in, in your development plan review process with the town planning?
We would have, yeah, I mean, from our standpoint, everything we would present at that point would be, would be a final from our standpoint, we would have exact plans.
And I believe your testimony was that these panels do not move, they do not rotate, they do not seek the sun, that you place them in a certain direction?
Right.
And they stay there for the duration?
They're fixed in place, they do not move.
I don't have anything further from Mr. Mayland?
Okay, David, do you want to start?
A couple of questions. If things progress properly and smoothly, when would, would this go up? When would, when would you go online?
That's a tough question. The, the program is governed by a set of very strict state regulations, and we would like to push our deadlines back because they're very, very aggressive, but we can't. Our construction, you know, and our construction won't take that long, if you can believe it, we can do 500 KW as long as the site's prepped in a couple of weeks. We actually have to have, according to our contract with National Grid, an output determination test, they just want to make sure, we're going to be able to produce the amount of energy we've promised in our contract with them by, I'm circling, I'm circling the main issue, by February 28th, it needs to be up and running fully two months after that, so April 28th, roughly, we have to be commercially operating unless we, we actually lose the contract at that point.
Is this coming April 28th?
Yeah.
So it could, six months we're talking?
Right.
Yeah, well, five months.
Yeah, no, it's, it's aggressive, we've actually, in the past, we've attempted to push those deadlines out, and National Grid simply said it's a state rule, we can, if you're not, if you're operating on May 1st, we're going to tear your contract up, and we'd be selling power for three cents instead of 31 cents, so we'd be in trouble.
On this, on this map I have here, you've, you've drawn a dotted line that goes around the site, is that a 200, a 200-foot? You've contacted everybody within that area, is that right?
Yes, I, I did that, yes.
Okay. My question is, I, I have no idea what, plat 28 lot 46 is, because... Okay, my question is, I, I have no idea what plat 28 lot 46 is, because it says it belongs to the town of Hopkinton, and I believe it belongs to the town of Richmond. So you're, you're under Richmond, on the other side of the river.
I, you know, I think the tax code showed that as being Hopkinton property.
Uh, boy, I wish it was, because we could tax it.
[laughing]
But I believe it's Richmond.
Okay, Dave Barber, have anything?
Um, I had glare questions, noise questions, light questions, and you've answered me.
Thank you. And one of, and, you know, one of the reasons we're here, and I think, asking for this, and I think everyone sort of knows this, is because of the timelines. Um, and, and we're under such a strict timeline that if we didn't, you know, if this didn't move smoothly, we would, we would be out of luck, and, um, because of the program itself, and, and how tough it is to get in, and you're not really going to see these unless they're part of the program, I don't think there's any worry of this happening elsewhere in Hopkinton in the short term, prior to more comprehensive regulations being passed that have been discussed regarding solar PV. I mean, we're sort of it.
I just wish you had brought it forward a little earlier than this.
We do too, I mean-
You also push us to the edge, and that also lets our, our citizens not have a chance to really look at it.
Right.
I think that was, um, not appropriate on our end, to make us have to make those decisions so quickly for you.
Right.
Even if we are actually, you know, we are fond of the project, we think it's going to be a very good one, but I do wish you had given us at least six more months.
Right, and what happened on that end was, um, I'm, Sultas is now a client of mine. They, they, they picked up six projects, and, um, they essentially sold the first four to Megawatt, um, which are under construction right now, in, two in Providence and two in Cumberland. One of them is a ground mount in Com- in Providence, and one of them's a huge rooftop, about 1.2 megawatts, or, excuse me, in Providence. In this fifth project, the sixth one sort of fell apart, and the sixth project that Megawatt picked up from Sultas wasn't done until very recently, about a month ago, and, and frankly, Sultas just dropped the ball on, on it in their projects, and, and sort of Megawatt's trying to scurry and pick up the pieces and, and make this into something workable. So you can blame my other client for that. They, they sat on it for a year, which was, you know, really silly.
I do think it's a very good use of the gravel pit, and I think that, I'm really glad you're actually looking at those specifically, that does help us a great deal.
Right, and typically, you know, the ones we're looking at now are, we like them not only because of they're flat and they're usually sandy, and, um, typically, in a lot of them, they've had built-in screening through town permitting, so they're really good sites for this type of use.
Sylvia, have any questions to Mailman?
I've got a couple of, um, comments in reference to the district use table, but I'm not sure who to direct them to.
Give it a shot, we'll try.
Might be you, yeah. Um, in the document that you provided, uh, for instance, Councilor Capello noted that, in C, to prevent unauthorized access to, it shall be enclosed by perimeter fence, not less than. Um, in number, uh, letter B, um, it, it, all electrical connections and distribution lines are going to be underground unless constraints to the land make it impossible. I don't think that's something that we would ordinarily put in a, in our zoning ordinance. Who decides whether it's impractical or not, so I'm not sure that that, that language would quite pass muster.
Well, and, and, and to be honest with you, National Grid pretty much has a policy where they're going to put, um, you know, where our site ends and where theirs begins is sort of at the poles, and their three poles, they like to have, for whatever reason, they like to have all their equipment mounted on telephone poles, so, you know, by virtue of that, you will have some, you, the lines will be coming out of the ground at some point, up to poles and over to the distribution lines.
Oh, of course, yeah, yeah, well, that seems sensible.
Right.
So we'll have to look at that language. Uh, the other thing, uh, letter D, um, that will be approved by the International Dark Sky Association, um, we have an ordinance, and, um, it, it states exterior lighting within the facility, minimum necessary, so, um, obviously, you would have to, um, adhere to all the ordinances, et cetera, and, and our dark sky, so I'm not even sure if that's really necessary, but I wonder if this is more stringent. That I can't answer. I don't know if D is more stringent than our dark eye, dark sky ordinance, or, or, so is it something that needs to get looked at?
Well, you could put both. I mean, you're going to be setting these conditions. These are just suggestions to you.
Right, and maybe Jim would have an answer for that one, but, at a later date, but, yeah, so that's something to consider, and I hear your point, you could put in both.
Yeah, that they've got to comply with your ordinance and use fixtures approved by, so that you don't lose anything.
Okay, so, um, just for clarity, um, obviously, you, it's a residential zone, uh, you'd, you'd like it to go commercial with conditions, you're, you're amenable to that. Um, there was a house on there many, many years ago, it was before your time, Joe, and, um, and that was when the fire, Chief Stanley had to, and, and crew had to get the boat and get the woman out because of a flooding condition, and that was back where the flood plane was. Um, so that house is long, long since gone. Um, what we are doing, or, or what is being requested also, of course, is not just a proposal for this site, it's also asking the town whether or not you want to change your district use table and allow these, um, energy systems in commercial and manufacturing, and, um, whether or not it's permitted, whether they're both permitted or special exception or not, in the primary or, uh, secondary zones. So just to make sure we, we understand that, that this is something that, if we, if we go along with all of these conditions, then there's also the district use table that will then allow these systems to go in elsewhere into, okay.
Manufacturing.
Mm-hmm.
And commercial.
That's what's being asked for.
Scott, do you have anything?
Yes, I do, and, uh, Chris, well, I want to come, uh, to Councilor Capello for trying to clarify, uh, total, volat- volatic.
Voltec.
Voltec, and I had it right for a minute in my mind, so I will do that. And, and the problem is, when you ask an elected body to enact an ordinance, that ordinance implies to everybody, not just the applicant in question, and Sylvia kind of beat me to the punch because I was thinking the same lines. If you change the use per, uh, use tables, that implies anything in those zones. We had that situation on a zoning issue not far from there, uh, regard to a childcare center just this year. Uh, I do have some questions, though. Uh, is a, is a six-foot fence, is that normal for those type of areas?
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, we put, mostly what we do is six-foot chain link. I mean, I've seen at schools, a four-foot, I've seen some where they don't have any fence, um, some ground mounted, smaller ground-mounted systems behind people's homes where it's not, they didn't even bother, but, yeah, six-foot chain link is, is adequate.
Would you consider this proposal similar to other sites that are developed? It's really like a, a cop and copy of what they usually do with these type of sites?
Pretty much, yeah. Um, I mean, you see them in areas, you know, i- in mass, it's worth mentioning, it's a little bit more open. There's, there's actually a state statute that sort of takes, that sort of allows it by right in all zoning districts, um, and, um, there've been some problems with that. Um, you know, you've seen some go up in residential neighborhoods, and, and the big one is farm fields, um, you know, taking away farm fields. We've done a few that were with farmers because they wanted this steady income along with their farming operations, but, um, yeah, a gravel pit in, in the way this has been proposed is pretty standard and pretty typical.
I do have a concern about the tax benefits, but that will be addressed later, I'm sure. The only thing that concerns me is you're asking the council, uh, because of this timeframe, April 28th, because even if the council was, and I'd ask the town clerk to, correct me because she knows the, or the solicitor, uh, the timeframe, if, if in fact, the council chose to put the special use permit in, uh, as a condition for granting this, because we also have to realize that potentially other people in the future would have to, uh, they would be benefited if we put in permitted use, and the council was so inclined to change, that, uh, the council would have to change the ordinance once again after, after this ordinance. Uh, if in fact, the council was inclined to put in special use permits, would they have, they wouldn't have the opportunity with advertising and everything to go before the zoning board? Is that correct? Because-
Well, they'd have to go before the zoning board.
Yeah, but if, the, the question is, would they have the timeframe with advertising and everything?
Well, I mean, probably not.
No, because I'm-
Maybe they'd push them out, depending on when they could get before the zoning.
If I, for the record, I end to, uh, you have to note by, what, February 28th?
We have to have our, most of the site done by then, but some of the other pieces can wait until the two months following.
For the record, how much of the site do you have to have done by February 28th?
It's a good question. We have to, we have to be able to, we have to have our panels up, our racking in, our wires in, and the inverters in, such that we can turn the inverters on and measure output. Everything else, as far as the meters and, um, some of the interconnection work, which is simple and should take a few days, but can take several months because it's National Grid, we can do in that period between February 28th and April 28th.
Thank you. I have no further questions, Mr. Mailman.
Thanks, Scott. I just had a couple, Mr. Mailman. Um, you said about 1,500 panels, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I guess if, if someone was to climb the fence and get in there, are they, can you touch them? I mean, is there anything?
You can touch them, yeah, they don't-
So you're not going to get blown up or anything?
No.
I wasn't sure, I'm going to have to touch the panel.
No.
Okay, so that, they're, they're okay to touch?
They're okay, they don't, I mean, they, yeah, you can-
You can put your hands on them.
Yeah, I mean, animals-
Kids got in there, they touched them, they're not going to disappear.
No, they wouldn't be electrocuted if I touched the panels, no.
All right, and I, I know when we initially met early on, uh, with the town manager, uh, early on when this project was kind of getting going, was there some benefit to the local folks around there with the electricity too? Was it, we, or is that not on the table anymore?
Well-
I know you mentioned something about that, but-
This is a program where actually all the, I mean, the way it works is the electricity goes out to the distribution lines along Bank Street, and everybody, the closest people or businesses to that eat it up, um, until it's no longer there. They won't know that, though. It won't be reflected on their bills or how their homes operate. Um, it's a little different than, you know, if they were on your house, where you can actually, you actually use that power. This is simply going out. Well, it's, it's not different, it's being used by businesses and people along Bank Street. The, um, the primary benefit would be, um, property taxes, for the most part. That would come from the site, and again, it's, it's, it's essentially net, net revenue, there's no associated cost, and we don't go to the schools or use the hospitals or the roads, it's, it's, it's all positive.
Yeah, I thought there was some kind of net benefit to the surrounding-
Not as far as electricity goes, yeah. This is, it's a, it's a program that the National Grid actually pays us for the electricity to, that goes out on the line. It, it gets used by locals, but, I mean, it, it's going to, you know, power several hundred homes at peak time, so.
Okay.
Can we find out what the value of this, this, this operation is, as far as the tax values, does he have a ballpark?
Do you have a ballpark idea of what the value of this, of the whole operation is?
That's dangerous territory.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you talking about tax values?
No, I know, I know, so-
Yeah, is, is this, is this a $1.5 million operation? Is it a $750,000 operation?
Well, you know, prices have come down a lot in solar, which is why it's, it's sort of booming right now as far as the development industry goes. Um, you could probably build this site for, um, $2 watt, and that would make it about, so for every megawatt, it's about $2 million, so it's probably, it's probably roughly a million-dollar facility to build from start to finish. Um, I don't know how the folks at Megawatt want to, want to work with the taxes. Typically, um, typically, and I, I say this in Massachusetts because it's the most prolific solar state, probably along the East Coast right now, they, they, it's been a big issue up there, and the way they're resolving it, and the state's tried to do something, and the towns freaked out and said, "No way." Um, they're roughly, every town is, that I've been in is entering into payments and little taxes, contracts for, for the life of the project, and you're looking at anywhere from, um, we went from 14,000 a megawatt to one town's a 20,000 a megawatt, um, going up every year by a couple percentage points, so, um, and again, it's, it's sort of all positive, so, um, it's not going to balloon your, your income, but it'll, it's 10, 12, something thousand dollars a year that you're going to be looking at.
Yeah, right now, I guess the, the taxes are, I don't know how much they are on this project.
Not much.
How much? Couple thousand, I think?
Well, we usually, the, the pilots generally are written for the personal property only, and we, we would pick up the property taxes as part of a, a lease agreement with Mr. McDonald.
Right. Okay, I'm all set, Mr. Mailman. I guess, thank you. Next.
You saw on this word, the testimony that you're about to give, and you're still going to have to-
I do.
For the record, your name and address, please?
Kevin McDonald, 23 Seaview Drive in Charlestown, Rhode Island.
Kevin, you're a principal in the Limited Liability Company Bank Street Holdings, LLC?
Yes, I am.
You're an owner along with, uh, the Root family?
That's correct.
And, uh, how long has your entity owned this property?
I think just under 10 years.
And have you attempted to develop it in a residential fashion as it's owned?
We have.
And, uh, how long have you tried to do that?
Probably six years or so, maybe a little bit more.
Had any, uh, had any offers on the property for purchase, or that's a-
No viable offers.
And you had a proposal before the, uh, the town of Hopkinton for a affordable housing complex?
That is correct.
And that was, uh, that was denied, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that was a question of, uh, having water to the property?
Yes.
The property right now does not have water to it.
No, it does not.
Now, you also, in addition to being, uh, an owner of, uh, Bank Street Holdings, you also own a residential dwelling, uh, adjacent to the property, do you not?
I do, 1125 Main Street.
Okay, and how is that property used? Is that a rental property that you have?
It's a single-family rental.
Okay, okay. Uh, during your term of ownership, uh, you say you've had no viable, uh, offer on the property to use it as a residential fashion?
That is correct.
Yeah, I don't have anything further, Mr. McDonald.
So, Scott, any questions for Kevin?
No, I don't.
Okay. Sylvia?
You?
Barbara?
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
You saw on this word, the testimony that you're about to give, and you're still going to have to-
I do. Uh, Michael Lenahan, Certified Real Estate Appraiser, offices at 53 High Street, West Side.
Mr. Lenahan, how long have you been a certified appraiser in the state of Rhode Island?
Uh, since they started certifying them in 1992.
And prior to that time, you acted as an appraiser?
Uh, yeah, before that, uh, back to, uh, I don't know, 1968, '69, somewhere around there.
Uh, your certification is not only in residential, but also in commercial property?
Certified general is, yes, in all aspects of real estate.
Um, Mr. Lenahan, you, are you generally familiar with the area in question, the subject matter of this hearing?
Uh, yes, I testified before your zoning board with the, um, original special use permit for the, um, self-storage facilities, uh, whenever that was, many years ago.
And that is located directly adjacent to, on the-
That's correct.
-west of this property?
That's correct.
You're generally familiar with the, uh, the, the site in question?
I am.
You're familiar with roughly, with the, with the zoning in this area?
Um, it, it's a real mixed bag. It's, some of it's commercial, some of it's, um, uh, 80,000 square foot residential, some of it's RH10. Uh, there's just about a little bit of everything in that area.
I'm going to show you this, Mr. Lenahan, ask you if I can identify it?
Looks like the zoning map. That's a portion of the zoning map, uh, which includes the subject property.
It shows the subject property, uh, RFR80, if I can make that part of the-
That's correct.
...record? And there's some, as well. The, uh, the storage facility that's located directly to the west of this property, I believe you, uh, they, uh, received approval from the town to expand, uh, their use just within the last few months?
That's correct.
You testified before the board at that?
Yes, I did.
That particular time, the zoning board?
Yes, I did.
And the planning board, I believe. And the planning board, I believe. And the history of, of this, this site, along with the storage facility, they came all out of the same, same original tract, did they?
Pretty much, um, you know, the, the use, uh, I understand there was one house there a long time ago, but pretty much you're looking at trucks and sanitation departments and things of that nature. I believe it was a town garage for a while. Um, you know, I, I think in spite of the fact that the property's zoned RFR-80, that the, the market has spoken on this property that, you know, it's just not a residential piece of property, no matter what you zone it. It's a commercial piece of property. It's fronts on two streets. Um, you know, one of them has residential houses on it, but the buffer from their backyard pretty much limits that. The other one is the, it's so far below grade from Bank Street that I can't imagine there being any residential development there.
And I'm going to show you this, uh-
Land use map.
That is the future land use map of the comprehensive plan?
That's correct.
And that map indicates this property in what zone?
RFR-80.
Could make this part of our record as well, because I think everybody probably has a copy of that. Can I ask if I can identify some bunch of photos, Mr. Lenahan?
Those are photos that I produced from a computer program in my office. Photos of the, the subject site and the surrounding properties.
Those are aerial views?
Yes.
They're fair and accurate representation of what they purport to show?
They are.
If I could have those introduced in the mark, please? There's actually two originals and then these are some extras. Let me show you another set of photos, Mr. Lenahan.
These appear to be photos of the subject site and the boat that's on it. I think, I think it was a boat.
About a half a boat now.
A half a boat now, yeah.
I could have these as part of the record as well? And there's an, there's an extra set. Those photographs, fair and accurate representation of what's, what the site looks like?
Yes.
How, how would you describe this site, Mr. Lenahan? It's a-
It's a sandpit. Um, to me, it's an attractive nuisance. Um, I-
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
I said, "To me, it's an attractive nuisance." Uh, I'm surprised that there have not been some kind of problems in there over the years with kids doing things and various motor vehicles and things of that nature. I don't know, maybe there is.
I, I think as part of the photos that we've introduced, there are a number of tire tracks and-
Well, there's a lot of things there.
In circles. Usually that comes from all-terrain vehicles.
Something, yeah.
The site is pretty much accessible by anybody who wants to get in. There's a-
Uh, yes.
It's a kind of a gate in the back, but very easily avoided?
Yes.
From a residential standpoint, Mr. Lenahan, in your opinion, as a real estate appraiser for many, many years, the site, the site have any development potential from a residential standpoint?
Um, I don't believe so. And I think the, as I said, I think the market has spoken. I mean, we've been through three or four or five booms in real estate where everything that was residential in the way of a lot was chewed up, subdivided, split off or whatever by the developers. And the developers have all stayed away from this piece of property for some reason. Um, part of it might be because they don't even think it's zoned residential. You wouldn't think it is to look at it. You wouldn't think that it is to look at the surrounding area. It just doesn't look like a residential piece of land. The other thing is it, it's just a very difficult piece to develop residentially.
And directly to the west, you have a commercial use of property, which has just expanded, which is the mini storage facility?
Right. And, you know, I mean, the development that would take place if you were going to develop it residentially would probably not be the higher-end homes. It would probably be more modest homes, uh, if you developed it at all.
Uh, in your aerial photo, you show four or five homes along Main Street that abut this property?
Correct.
Uh, in your opinion, could those, could those homes be screened adequately to protect them from this particular use if they needed protection?
They could be screened, sure, if they're not already. Uh, if you notice the, the pictures, there's already trees and things back there. So depending on the height of whatever's installed, um, sure, they can be screened.
You've heard the testimony of Mr. Maitland on the, this use that doesn't require water, does not require sewer, requires little or no maintenance, little or no traffic. Do those, if this property were re-zoned to, um, commercial, would it have any adverse effect on the value of the neighboring residential properties?
No, not in my opinion. As a matter of fact, I picked up on what Mr. Lombardo said, and I agree with it wholeheartedly, that knowing what's there is going to be the biggest asset to, to this project because people who live along there and have their residence there and, and businesses and everything else, no longer will have to guess what's going to happen with this property. There's a project there. It's a fairly passive project. It's not going to create, um, traffic. It's not going to create noise. It's not going to create problems. It's there. It's contributing, but it, it's, it's like it's not there.
In, in this particular proposed use, Mr. Lenahan, do you see any negative impact to the, to the town of Hopkinton from its proposal?
Not really. I went through the zoning permitted uses for the commercial zone. I went through the comprehensive plan, page by page by page today, trying to look for something that, some negative aspect of it or whatever. And, um, this is not my first experience testifying for this, a project of this nature. Um, so it's not something that came out of the blue. And I, to me, it's a win-win situation for all parties involved.
And solar is not something that if you just happen to own a piece of commercial property, decide you want to do solar, that's not something that readily done from your, from what you know about the solar industry?
Uh, no, it's, there's, to give you an example, a project of this nature was proposed in Westerly at the, the landfill, and it turned out that it couldn't be put in because the landfill couldn't support the, the weight of the units.
And you'd have, you'd have to have some type of an arrangement with National Grid? You have to have some type of contract with National Grid?
Right. And you need traffic problem or traffic control. You need to be able to tie into the system. It's, it's, it's a fairly complicated project.
And not like you're going to build a barn?
No.
If you, to do, to do solar. In your opinion, uh, the best uses of this property, would it be a, a commercial use rather than a residential use?
Yes.
Do you see anything negative in the change of the categorization from residential to commercial on the future land use map in the town?
I do not. Um, as I say, I think the market's spoken anyways, that it's, it's a commercial use now. It's, it's just a question of formalizing it.
I have nothing further, Mr. Lenahan. If you have any questions?
Scott, anything for Mr. Lenahan?
Yeah, I do have. Mr. Lenahan, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Hurst.
Uh, the only question I have, and I brought it up to the other gentleman, obviously more appropriate to you. Can you discuss, obviously, common sense would tell somebody that if you had something there, you'd generate more tax revenue than if it was a vacant piece of land. So could you address, um, what the town of Hopkinton could reasonably expect tax-wise for something like this? Have you considered that at all?
Um, I've considered the fact that, um, and, and I did think about this today, um, the net effect versus the gross effect. I think, you may be asking me about the gross effect. What, what can the town expect in gross taxes? Um, I, I, the net effect would be, this project requires no one to educate.
It requires what?
No one to educate. In other words, you don't have to, you're not increasing your schools. You're not putting anyone in the schools. I mean, if to put up a house there that's going to have three bedrooms, you're probably going to have one or two kids to educate. That's a net loss to the town, you know? This, whatever you get, you know, it's not going to require any police protection, minimal. It's probably not going to require more than minimal fire protection. There's no water. There's no sewage. Um, you know, I really can't think of any town services that it's going to require. So the net of whatever they would pay in taxes is pretty much a win-win situation for the town.
Would, and I don't know if it's material. I didn't notice it. Maybe I missed it. Is there any evaluations, expected evaluation with this property be worth, when complete? What ballpark would the, the panels be worth?
You would have to ask your tax assessor. I would not go out on a limb and guess what your tax assessor's going to do.
I think it's a good question, that's why I asked.
Well, it, it is a good question, um, you know, and the gentleman kicked around, you know, maybe a million dollars. Um, you can do the math based on your tax rate. I mean, generally speaking, and the million dollars that was going to be spent didn't include the value of the land, uh, which, in my opinion, the land is probably worth more zoned commercial than it is zoned residential because it has a better hire and best use. So, um, you know, you could, you could bring in a, a fairly hefty sum of funds.
We'd like to ask the council president, if possible, could we ask the tax assessor for an estimate for part of our decision we're going to make?
Yeah, I think it's important. I think, um, knowing what the overall cost might be, I guess you'd have to have those figures.
Yeah, I mean, to make it for us, to make an intelligent decision, we should at least have some idea.
I think the tax assessor will make that determination. And I don't think how many taxes something will bring in is necessarily what this meeting is about. And I, I think you're postponing the decision by using something that we are not going to need to make the decision.
Well, we're not making a decision tonight, folks. It's just a hearing, so.
No, I mean, I can understand council's power point. I agree with that, but since we're talking about the tax benefits, most people realize that any piece of land that doesn't have schoolchildren-
Well, we have time to find that information. I'll make sure that we have it.
Thank you.
One, one thing that you could do is you could close your hearing tonight and schedule your decision hearing, but leave open only having the tax assessor maybe come and speak to you that night so that-
Written report.
Yeah, that's okay.
Well, except that, I, I think you're asking her in some ways to give you an impossible answer because she doesn't know the specifics that she's going to be able to do it. You might want her to stand in front of you so that you can say to her, you know, she's going to be able to tell you what it's assessed now, what the, what the difference will be if it's assessed as a commercial property versus a residential property, sort of in general terms. Do you know what I mean? I don't think she's going to be able to give you because she's not going to have the specifics she needs to give you a real good figure, but she may be able to answer some of your questions about, like, kind of overall how it's going to change. That's all. But you could, you could ask her to come, you know, close it for a lot of purposes and just ask her to come.
But if we have a proposal that's going to be built within the next few months, we agree to it, then there must be some idea of-
But you don't have that, Scott. You don't have the specifics of, of it. But they're going to be going to the planning board, discussing it with them in terms of what's going to be produced. You're not going to be able to get specific figures. And whether or not a property should be rezoned, Barbara already said it. I'm just repeating what she said, but it's not really germane to the issue of whether or not a rezone is appropriate for property. So you don't, I would encourage you not to get too far afield on this.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Mr. Lenahan?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I, obviously, in my mind, I can, I already know that it's taxable at a certain amount now. It's a vacant piece of nothing. It can't be used residentially. We've tried. It's not going to work. So, um, this is, is perfect, as far as I'm concerned. Everything you said I agree with. It's a perfect use for that property because what are you going to do with it? So I'd rather see, you know, let's move forward with this and then you know it's there and you have controls over it. Obviously, it's going to be an increase in value. It's not going to be, there aren't going to be services that might be minimal from time to time, and that's normal for anybody. I mean, the police might be needed for something, just like anywhere. But, so, yeah, so I agree with what you said and I think that, um, it's the only, I can't even imagine another use for it. So one of the concerns has been, um, in Hope Valley is, is proposals that come in and you change zoning and then you increase the septic loadings, and that's not going to happen. So we're going to ensure that, that we're not going to do that. And I think that's perfect.
Excellent.
I agree.
Barbara?
I agree with Sylvia.
Okay.
She said, what was that?
Any questions, Mr. Lenahan?
Yeah, well, I, I agree with Sylvia. Um, fully. I, I think it's a wonderful idea. I think it's a great piece of land to do it on because, boy, you're not going to put houses in there ever. It's, it's, it's a gravel pit. I'm, I am a little concerned, and I can remember the water flowing out of that piece of property right across into the ball field into, back into the river again. I'm a little concerned of the, of the flood, the potential flooding of that, of that river.
Why?
Uh, because, because that river has gone up into that property. We, we had, we had the big flood three years ago.
I understand that, but-
That, that piece of property was underwater.
Okay. But what, what is the town's risk?
This doesn't concern me. I'm just, I'm concerned for, for the potential developers of that property.
Well, I'm, I'm sure. I mean, I haven't spoken with them on point, but-
I hope they're aware of that.
Um, I'm sure they're aware of it. Uh, you know, it-
But no, I, I think it's, I think it's a wonderful idea. I really do. For that piece of property, ideal. I truly hope it doesn't devalue the house lots along the road on Main Street.
Properly buffered, I, I don't believe it would.
Yeah.
And, and I got to tell you, there's, what's there right now devalues those houses more than anything that these people are proposing.
No, it's not nice enough.
You know, I mean, it's-
I know the property quality. Look, I live a quarter mile away from that. I know the property well.
I'm sure you do. And not knowing what's there devalues it because I'll tell you, I wouldn't buy one of those houses not knowing what I'm going to have in my backyard. So.
Yeah. No, other than I'm fine.
Okay. I mean, I know what the assessed value is now and I'll, we'll try and get some clarification on, on what this assessor might say. I'm just curious myself. But, you know, I know they're going to spend a fair amount of money and it should bring you some good revenue, but I'm not sure to what degree. But it'll be a lot more than $1,900, I think, so.
I would think so.
I also-
Thank you.
I, I also think when we talk about what we would like to see there or what it looks like, unfortunately, I think there are going to be people who do not want to see that in their backyard or near their backyard. They may not like photovoltaic solar farms. They may prefer gravel banks that are coming back into a natural state, you know, over the next 200 or 300 years, but they may prefer that to this. So, I mean, aesthetically, I don't think we have a strong argument. They may hate this. They may hate the other thing. But I do think it's a very good project for this particular piece of property.
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lenahan.
That's the extent of our witnesses. Anybody who's interested here, who wants to speak?
Yes. Is anyone out in the public wishing to be heard on this matter?
Ms. Howard?
Mr. Walker? Mr. Walker?
Howard Walker from the planning board. I just wanted to make a couple of points. I have not seen the recommendation that actually made it to your desks from our last meeting, so I'm speaking from memory as to what we did and why we did it, subject to correction by whatever may be in the written record. Obviously, we like this project because it would generate tax revenue for the town with, so far as we could see, no discernible adverse environmental or other impact whatsoever. It looks like nothing but a winner for everybody involved from our point of view. On the other hand, this obviously is a rush job. It was for us, as it is for you. And in fact, as I, at the beginning, as I was sitting there listening to some of the applicant's tales of woe, I was sort of mindful of that sign that usually sits outside Lisa's office, that, you know, poor planning on your part does not create an emergency on my part. But the, nevertheless, as the, as the story unfolded, we saw great merit in the, in the project and saw it a sufficient value to the town to make it worth our while to go out of our way to accommodate the applicant and make it possible for them timewise to get this project done. That's the reason for certain of the recommendations that we made. Most particularly, the original application was to create a new use of solar energy. There are many kinds of solar energy, some of which uses would most likely be required only with a special use permit. The timeframe that the applicant has to work with wouldn't permit, as a practical matter, getting a special use permit, going to the zoning board, back to the planning board, and so on. So the recommended use that we, as we defined it and suggested it be put in the district use tables, was amended to be photovoltaic solar energy because that uniquely among the various solar energy applications is environmentally benign. And there would be no reason, in our judgment, to require the applicant to get a special use permit for that very narrow use. At the same time, that would permit this project to go forward while giving us and the council time for more careful appraisal of perhaps adding other types of solar energy uses into the district use table. And hence, the, the very narrow definition of the use that we recommended approving, which would be a permitted use in the commercial and manufacturing zones. Later on, we would anticipate adding some further uses, which would be S's in these zones, and would definitely require a special use permit. That is also the reason why we recommended approval of the zoning change for this property and the corresponding changes to the, you know, to the future land use map and so on, that we would impose as a condition that this use would be the commercial use to which this property would be put. I mean, the, the reason we did that was, so obviously, if this thing falls flat on its face and they don't get their contract, we don't want to be in a situation where they can just come in and say, aha, we're going to put a drive-in restaurant here and there's nothing you can do about it. I mean, if they want to put some other commercial use on this property, they're going to have to come back to the council for some further rezoning. So that, too, was very narrowly drawn. And we think that, you know, with that, as we have recommended it, that it would be a viable project and can be done within the timeframe that the applicant has and will have as a good project. Now, my recollection as to the fence, I thought that we specified that the fence would be not less than six feet, rather than not more than twelve feet. And, you know, so, and the more exact requirement would probably await our next planning board hearing when we see the actual drawings and so forth as what the applicant is actually proposing. That's, that's all I had.
Thank you, Howard, very much, thank you.
Howard, let me just tell you, too, that the written material that was produced, the written recommendation by the planning board, fabulous.
Excellent.
Let me just add that.
Yes.
I know you haven't seen it, but.
Well, I'm sure our planner is very efficient and would produce nothing less.
That's right. He's laughing, but.
Linda did it.
Yeah. Thanks.
Let's say that the, just for the record, the applicant is cognizant and assent to the conditions imposed by the, by the planning board, as stated by Mr. Walker. And we more than accept the limitation that the use be limited to solar on this site, and solar as, as specified in the recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Linehan.
Can we take a break before we get to that side?
Well, we're done.
Let's finish this.
We're almost done.
All right, does council have any more comments? Okay, we have a motion to either continue the hearing?
Motion to close it. I was going to say, motion to close the hearing and set a date for a decision.
And would you include input from the tax assessor in that?
And that we allow for input from the tax assessor, how about that?
A motion to close the hearing, allowing for input from our tax assessor and set a date for a decision.
Second.
Okay, motion being second, any further comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Give me the date.
The date, Lisa.
The next regularly scheduled town council meeting is January sixth.
Do that.
Six minutes.
Mr. Lambier, when the next planning board hearing is, which is, it's the eighth.
Yes, yeah, a couple of days after.
Yeah. Does anyone object to us sending out, so we don't miss that eighth hearing? Would anybody object to us sending out notices of the planning board hearing on development plan review? I know it's somewhat presumptuous, but I would, if.
That's really a question for the chairman of the planning board, not her.
I mean, I don't want it, I don't want somebody to come, I come in here on the sixth. You sent out notices and you don't even have a reason. I just don't want to miss that January eighth hearing.
We're not going to give you an answer on that, Mr. Nakarao. You're going to have to take your chances.
He's right there in the back.
Yeah, the person who goes and checks.
But I think you know where we're coming from.
Let's not outchange a meeting for January.
No, no, no.
I mean, gratefulness goes both ways. We're glad something's happening to the project, and you're glad something's getting done. So let's see what we can do to expedite as we can.
I will, in the, in the interest of expediting this, I am going to send out the notices.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Well, that's done. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Approve the town council meeting minutes of December 2nd, 2013, special town council meeting minutes, executive session minutes and workshop notes of November 25th, 2013. Set February 18th, 2014 as the second town council meeting in February due to President's Day holiday, accept the following report, town clerk, approve abatement submitted by tax assessor.
I like to pull the town council meetings of December 2nd, special town council meeting minutes, executive session minutes and workshop notes of November 25th, 2013.
She can't, she's got to speak in the microphone. Yeah, she's, she's all that, you know.
Okay, then we'll have a motion to set February 18th, 2014 as the second town council meeting in February due to President's Day holiday, and to accept the following report, town clerk, and approve the abatement submitted by the tax assessor.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Nakarao.
David.
David, you can't do that.
I just, I want to get in trouble because you may have to contact them. All right, okay.
I'm sorry, what do you want to change, Scott?
Okay, number one, we all haven't finished reading executive session minutes, I finished off the page two until we had.
So we'll just call until next time.
The workshop notes is south.
I mean, November 25th workshop, okay.
I move to say be adopted with exception executive session minutes and a special town council meeting minutes. Okay, let me state this again. I move that the special town council meeting minutes, not including executive session minutes, but the workshop notes be accepted with the corrections noted.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I, what are we approving?
I'm sorry, dear.
I made a motion.
Do I want to restate that?
Do I want to restate that? No. I would draw my motion, you would draw your second. Who did make the second?
Actually, I can, someone restate it.
Yes.
To, to, I made a motion to approve workshop notes of, with the corrections.
There you go.
Distribute it before the meeting, and councilor Thompson seconded.
And the, and the special town council minutes, but not the executive session.
Right, that's what she said. That's what she said, and she just said it a little with less language, that's all.
Are you upset with that, Barbara?
Less words.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I thought I was pretty articulate, but I guess not.
No.
I move that we adopt the town council minutes of December 2nd, 2013, change with.
With the correction.
With the correction.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There was no correction for the special town council meeting minutes, so I messed up on that.
Okay, then, doesn't matter, it's done, they're wrote.
That's what you get when you're working on two minutes, so, I apologize for that.
That's okay.
Okay.
Okay, first, public forum. Anyone out there wishing to be heard? Okay. Next on the agenda is town council president report. I just wanted to publicly state my appreciation for Mr. Barry Simpson at the Rhode Island Department of Transportation's Cultural Resources Unit for allowing the town to retain the historic capstones from the Woodville Road construction site. At our last town council meeting, the historic district commission president, Richard Prescott, had asked for some help. I made a phone call, an email, and the guy was great.
Wonderful.
Said, you know, I said, you know, we love the DOT, you know, I was begging him, and anyway, so, long story short, he really was a fantastic guy. Said, I'll do what I can do, and he made a few phone calls to the construction site, to the resident engineer, as well as the contractor, because his biggest fear was that it was included in the work order and can he reverse that? And, and he was able to do that in a small time, short timeframe, and it worked out great. So we've got some historic capstones that hopefully will be left in our town, and I'm glad that he was fantastic, and I just want to publicly acknowledge how great he was to work with, so, that's that. Next on the agenda, town manager report, Bill McCary.
Thank you. Just very briefly regarding the South Drive drainage improvement project, on December 11th, Laura Kenyon, Tim Teft, Sean Martin, our on-call engineer, and myself, we met in the Thayer House conference room to further coordinate the paperwork requested by FEMA on the project. Despite numerous prior submissions by the town, FEMA continues to request additional information, and hopefully, the information that we're going to provide him by Friday of this week will finally satisfy their needs. And basically, it is a compilation of all that we've done this year and last year, and those costs are going to be factored into a revised benefit cost ratio, which hopefully should finally solve the problem. The good news is that the initial grant that we put in for a hundred, approximately a hundred thousand dollars, has been approved by FEMA, and they're committed to seventy-five percent of their project, which is seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars for the town. That's all set. It's the grant addendum application that's currently causing the delay, so. And lastly, I worked on developing and compiling the town-wide annual and multi-year goals prepared by department heads. They were all due in my office by last Friday, and basically, what we'll do is we'll compile them and then discuss them at the January staff meeting, and once finally compiled, they'll be presented to the council at a later time, probably the last meeting in January or first meeting in February, for review and consideration.
Anybody have any questions with Bill? Hey, Bill, I just have one question on South Drive. When is that bid being, I guess, as far as the contractor, when is the, is his bid expiring, I guess? That's coming up, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. I think it's mid-February. He has already granted two sixty-day extensions.
Oh, okay.
So that, you know, technically, that bid will be over. We are going to ask him to give us another extension so that come springtime that, you know, we won't have to rebid the project. So that's basically up to him. If he increases his bid or decides that he doesn't want the bid, then we'll have to rebid it.
Okay.
But we don't anticipate that because he's been very good, he's already consented to two sixty-day extensions already, so.
Okay, great, thanks. Yes, Sue.
I, I just want to thank you for moving this, the South Drive project, keeping it going and keeping it going, and you're not going to let it fail, and someday, that will get done, I have no doubt.
Hopefully, right?
You're going to keep at it.
We're very persistent.
You are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, you have any?
I just would like to extend to our town manager, happy holidays to him and his staff, so.
Okay, all right. Next on our agenda, on the new business, is the presentation by consultants from Mason Associates, Inc., on the status of the ongoing rewriting and updating of the town zoning ordinances.
You've been waiting.
Good evening. I want to thank you for moving me back on your agenda. We had some other things we had to do first, and I'm, I know everybody wants the top of your agenda, we're on the other end for a change. Thank you for accommodating us, I appreciate that. With me this evening is Nancy Latonda. Nancy is an attorney with Ursillo Tights &amp; Rich. She's very familiar with hearings such as that which we just observed this evening because she sits as solicitor to multiple planning boards throughout the state, and as an attorney, she's working with me to help keep me honest, and in fact, keep all of us honest and ensure that we're meeting the obligations of the zoning ordinance as far as state law are concerned. I'm really here because I want to hear from you some this evening, but I promised a status report, so let me start with the status report. A few quick points. First, we are reviewing the existing ordinance for its compliance with state requirements, and I will turn it over to Nancy in just a minute to talk about some of the things we need to do to the ordinance based on changes in state law since it was originally written. Second, we've, we've been wallowing in the, in the amount of text that's there. We, just this evening obtained from the clerk, thank you so much, by the way, I really appreciate this, all the amendments that have taken place, where did I, did I leave them over there?
It's too heavy to carry.
Too heavy to carry around. Well, so if I go to Muni Law or I go to the town's webpage and I download the zoning ordinance, what I get is a zoning ordinance and about half a dozen amendments. In fact, I brought an outline of it here, if you want to just take a copy and pass those around. There is no table of contents, but there is now, and that's it. It doesn't have page numbers on it yet, but it will someday. We tried to get the text through Muni Law because Muni Law maintains all this web presence and has the ordinance itself on the web, so we thought maybe they could provide it to us in a form we could edit. It appears to be extremely expensive and extremely time-consuming to do it that way. I can't remember exactly, Ms. Cook-Martin, how much?
Four hundred dollars and a week, they said, April to June sometime.
Yeah, forty to sixty days, April to June sometime, and several thousand dollars. We think we can do it cheaper, and we intend to do so. In fact, I already have people who are about a third of the way through the thing, so we will deliver it to you as it presently exists in Word, and then we'll deliver it to you with our marked-up recommended changes. You can turn the changes on or off, so you can see what a clean ordinance would look like, or with the changes, you can tell specifically what we're, what changes we're, we're working on. Just to summarize some of those changes, first, the way it's set up now, we have the body of a zoning ordinance that was passed twenty years ago or so, and then in quite an assemblage of amendments. So I can't really tell when I read the ordinance what applies to my property because the parts that I'm reading up front might just no longer be applicable. A lot of the pieces of the main, what's called the pamphlet, have been superseded. So if you go and grab the pamphlet and read how it applies to your property, you're going to be very confused because a few pages further on, you'll find an amendment that says it's different. What we need to do is take the amendment and blend them into the body of the document. What we need to do is take the amendments and blend them into the body of the document. When we do that, there are places that they overlap, and occasionally places where they conflict. For example, many amendments include additional definitions. The Aquifer District has a bunch of definitions in the front end of it. Really, we want to, we can't just take the Aquifer District and stick it in this way. We need to take the definitions and put them in the definitions section, and the standards for performance go in the performance. Things have to be organized appropriately within the document. So our first move will be to take all of these amendments and create one version that is a zoning ordinance as current with all amendments in it. The second thing is specific changes that were recommended to us by the zoning officer. I don't want to put any words in your mouth, Brad, but let me see if I've got this right. He says, I like this, and so I do want to get it right, it's got to be easy to follow, and it's got to work effectively. How'd I do? That, he, the ordinance provides some common sense flexibility, so we can apply the law in a rational way, and that flexibility needs to be retained. And there are an assortment of very, of very specific uses. I won't bother you with all of them today, but for example, you should be able to put a co-located second antenna on an existing tower without having to get a separate special use permit for that. Once you've approved a tower and an antenna, if I put a second antenna on the tower, it probably doesn't have to go through the whole special use process. That some split lots, moving the line 30 feet is allowed now. But if I have a commercial lot that's divided in half, and half commercial and half residential, and I have a commercial setback on one side of the line, and a residential setback on the other side of the line, that 30 feet might not cut it. And, and one of the things that was suggested was a process where I could come in and say, look, it's half commercial, half residential, can we please just make it commercial? Or can we please just make it residential? So a way of dealing with split lots. Anyway, I won't recite all of the concerns that have been expressed to us, but the zoning officer has listed a number of things, and so those are the changes. And then, next, and these are, by the way, not in any order of priority, would be the planning board's concern, as conveyed to us by the planning board and the town planner. For example, implementing the exit one recommendations, particularly manufacturing light industry properties at exit one that need to be identified. We need to create the use category, the, the district, and then we have to apply the use tables for it. And the planning board has done a lot of work on this already, and I know you have a memo from the planning board regarding that. Other, other parts, an open space zone, establishing an open space zone and putting some of our properties that we know are dedicated open space into that open space zone. And then some adjustments, we can either change the future land use map or change the zoning map, but between the two of them, we want to minimize the amount of existing non-conforming we have, because existing non-conforming can become problematic. We want to try and reflect, if, if we have an existing use that's a commercial use, and it has been for 30 years, and it's going to be for 30 years, let's not put it on the map as, as industrial or as residential. Let's talk about what it's probably going to really be. And so in some cases, those are zoning changes, and in some cases, those are future land use changes, but we will bring them to you as a package, so you have the opportunity to review them and consider what their implications are as we begin to adopt them. I'm going to turn it over to Nancy. You want to talk a little about some of the changes that the state is imposing on us, or that we do to get along with the state requirements? Because what the state has is enabling legislation, and it lets you do things, and that's an important ability.
Good evening, everyone. Nancy Latander, it's a pleasure to be here with you today. Well, as you, as you probably know, the Rhode Island General Assembly, year after year, likes to do these little tweaks and changes to legislation, and, and the zoning legislation is no exception to that rule. Now, the main zoning law was enacted in 1991. There's been numerous changes since then. I think I came across about 48 different pieces of legislation, which I thought was kind of, kind of a small number. But we're just looking at the Zoning Enabling Act. Some of those were just a matter of just simple word changes here and there. There's very, very few of substance that, and none are concerning. There was a major effort made in the law to accommodate residents with disabilities, so we have some changes as a result of that, particularly with regard to the use of accessory family dwelling units for family members with disabilities. Recently, state law has made it so that any ramps or other accommodations are exempt from setback requirements. And then there's been an introduction, a lot of ADA compliant language, which we will be putting into the Hopkinsons zoning ordinance. Then there's been more accommodation for agriculture and farming. There's some new as-of-rate uses and new definitions of farm enterprise and other accessory uses that I, I think you might be of interest to your community. And then there's the whole idea of comprehensive plan consistency. The Comprehensive Land Use Act was amended in 2010. So there are some timing issues in terms of updating zoning ordinance and things of that type. Also, there are some special considerations for the variances and special use permits. The language in your current ordinance is inconsistent with state law, and that's probably one of the main things we should take care of. And there's also been some changes in the process, some things that make it more efficient with filing of decisions and things of that type. And then there's been changes in the law regarding substandard lots of record, that's lots that don't meet the current zoning in a district. So those are the basic areas of things where I see some inconsistency with state law. My next, my next job is going to be to look at the process. One of the things I do on a regular basis when I represent communities is we, we engage in the process of zoning and planning and subdivisions, et cetera, and there's a lot of ways to make that work more effectively and efficiently, and I look forward to working with your staff in finding ways that we might be able to streamline the process and get as much information about a, about a project up front, so it makes it easier to get through the system. So that's about all I have to add to.
Thank you. Let me emphasize that we're not doing any of this to the plan. We're recommending that you do this, to the zoning ordinance, rather. We're recommending that you do this, and so we're going to have to bring it to you in specific terms, so you will have the opportunity to see what it says now, and turn on the comments and see what we think it probably should say. And if you don't think that's what it probably should say, then you have every right in the world. We will come here and sit with you, and we'll go through it and make sure that it says it the way you think it should be said, within the limits of the law. And I think it's probably, we're 60 to 90 days from that at this point now, so I think we're talking about late winter to be able to put together a draft that we can all look at. Right now, I don't even have a complete draft of the whole thing yet. I just got the amendments tonight, and I want to read through those and make sure that we can get those into the text. But if there are things about the zoning ordinance that are concerning you, a couple of things about that. One is, you can tell me right now if it's something that's been bugging you all along, and I'm, we're here to listen this evening, but two, this is not your only opportunity to tell us that. You know, you think about it and jot down some notes as you look at the zoning ordinances as we give you drafts, and we'll be happy to have some back and forth. So that's my progress report. Your turn.
Okay, thank you. Can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Two things, like earlier tonight, I'd really be interested in your input in regard to land use categories, specifically special use, permitted use. I know different cities and towns are different, and what might fit Hopkins and might not fit another town, vice versa. The other thing I'm, I think is very important in law, and I'm not a lawyer, but I appreciate the law, is the fact that, and what I was really impressed in, in reading was, to clear any loopholes, I think that clarity is very important, so that, as I believe, Bill, zoning inspector, there is no guessing, or, you know, it's easy to understand. I don't think you need to be a Wall Street lawyer or whatever the terminology is. I think that it's very important that we have an understanding. Clarity is very important for me, and I'll let the other councils, that's what I have on the top of my head right now.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And it is for the applicants, too, because when I'm an applicant and I have something to do with my property, I need to be able to figure out what I can do by right and what I have to ask special permission for, and that's where special use permits come in. So that's, those are very...
I would just like to comment, Mr. President, that I did review, both of these individuals have very strong credentials, and I think they will serve Hopkins well. I think that, because here is, we know that the press notes that, but both of them come to the table with some credentials, and I think that we can trust them to do the job. Thank you.
Thank you for those kind words.
Anything else?
Yes, ma'am.
A couple of things, and you probably already know this, but I would be concerned that changes that we make, or that may be suggested, and it affects the property owner. The property owner thinks that it's a certain way, and we want to make sure that if something's going on, they need to know. And I know Jim's been working on that with property owners, talking to them person to person, but something's going to fall through the cracks, so we want to make sure we make every effort to make sure that whatever's going on, those, and its effects on individual or property owner, we want to make sure they know. The other thing, you mentioned substandard lots of record. I don't know what the heck to do. You can't, if it's so small, but it, you know, it exists and they own it, and let's say it's, it's, you can't put a house there, or, I don't know. I don't know what to do with those sorts of things. So that's an area that we need to be careful with. You know, how small is too small? I might think something's too small, somebody else might think, oh, that's fine, but, so I guess we'll kind of kick that around. The other thing that, that has come to the council's attention, and we haven't done anything with it, and it's not just this council, it's council after council, and it's one of those things that we, you know, you just don't know what to do with. If you've got a property owner, and let's say they own two lots, and they're next to each other, do they merge into one?
Yeah, your ordinance requires, in fact, your ordinance has already merged them for all practical purposes. As soon as the second, as soon as the owner bought the second parcel, it became one. You can't keep a substandard lot of record and owner adjoining land.
Oh, I didn't know that, meaning...
Your ordinance right now...
...necessarily substandard, but if you own two lots...
Oh, that's different.
Unless they're approved for subdivision or something, I guess then they can stay? If the developer company's got eight lots and they're all together, but he owns them?
Oh, that's different.
That's different, right.
That's different, right. If, if none of them are substandard, then the owner has eight lots, and you can either...
Oh, so you're only talking about, in that instance, substandard?
I misunderstood your comment, my apologies.
All right, well, I, that's why I'm kicking around, because I haven't, you know, I don't know.
If, if I own two pieces of land and one is a substandard lot, and the two of them are adjacent, then I don't own a substandard lot anymore. You have to merge the lots.
And I would think that when that occurs, that the, the individual would get a tax break. In other words, they, let's say they don't have two lots anymore, two buildable lots, they've got one, right? Is that how it works? And do they, you know?
When you have a vacant, so...
Maybe pull up on the mic.
If it's, if it's, if it's a lot of record, you can develop it, but if you own a lot next to it, then you have to merge them to develop it. Go ahead.
If you have two lots, you have a house on one, and then you also, that's in common ownership, it has to be the exact same names on the deed, then they would become merged. There's a lot to the merger provisions, because some people just put the husband and wife on one, and then the wife on another if they buy it. Well, the second the husband dies, by operational law, they merge. So there are provisions taken, but you really want to make sure that you take the right provisions if you're trying to avoid the merger. But if you buy a parcel of land that's substandard, and it's adjoining your house that you own, and you buy it in the same name that's on the title that you own your house in, they would become merged, as long as it's vacant. If there's two houses on it, if there's a house on yours and a house on the piece you're buying, they're already developed, they don't become merged, it doesn't regard, because they have their principal use on the property.
So in this instance, it's only the substandard that...
Right.
It's substandard vacant.
If I own two lots, though, and I'm, and those two lots are both bigger than required, I could subdivide either one. If I want to treat that like one large parcel, I would have to come in with subdivision and propose a development that merges those lots into one big lot, and then undertakes site plan review and plating and redevelops that lot. It's, basically, I could develop either one or both lots under that, under those circumstances. Both lots would have legal lots, legal buildable rights on them.
I don't mean to complicate the matter more...
But you will.
But our merger provision is unique in that if you legally subdivided one of the lots at the time underneath the law that was enacted back in 1972, it does not merge, even though it's substandard in nature under our current things. That's our current merger provisions. I have no idea what's going to come forward after that, so...
But I can see why that's a concern. You can see, obviously, it could confuse people.
I do have to go back, I got to do a lot of research, see what they want to...